Okay, everybody, good evening. And welcome to the January 9th meeting of the New London Board of Selectmen. A larger crowd than usual, so I'll just let you know that this meeting is being recorded. And before we start tonight, I just thought, since it's a national day of mourning, we might just take a moment of reflection. Whatever anybody's political views might be, I'd suggest that Jimmy Carter, as a person, offered us a model of humanity well worth respecting. I thought his honesty, integrity, grit, and his caring for other people was at the most basic human level, and I think he was a purposeful person to have in our society for a hundred years. So, we'll miss him as a person, forget the politics, okay? First item up this evening is the Selectmen are going to meet with the Commissioners of the New London Springfield Water Precinct. And Rob Thorpe, the Superintendent, is seated up in the front here. And this is a...
Steve.
And this must be Steve Zuback, a Selectman from Springfield. Welcome, Steve. So I thought what we would do tonight is to just toss around some ideas. We all, I think, have agreed over time that conservation is an important issue. The state has all sorts of regulations. You have some regulations from a year and a half ago, and so on, but I thought just to make it easy, we'd sort of talk about two or three ideas and see where it goes. I don't see us making any decisions. This is a conversation, right? We could make decisions if we want. But, so, my three things that I would suggest is, first of all, if the town is going to do something with its residents that are in the precinct, I think that the entire town should be involved, just as we've done with the septic thing, Bebe. You know, if you're gonna... Don't try to divide the town and say some yes and some no, so... And I would hope Springfield might feel the same way, that if, you know, there's gonna be regulations that have to do with conservation, they'd be extended to the entire town. That's just one thought. The second is that we try to make it a little bit simpler, something that fits on one page or card even, you know? It's these three days, and this is how it happens, because right now, even your regulation, you know, takes a couple of pages to read through it, and, you know, the attention span of the average person dealing with this sort of thing when they want to wash their car or water their lawn or something is pretty short. And then the third thing, which doesn't affect you particularly, but which is controversial in New London, is should we do away with the 61 deduct meters that we have? And what impact that might have on water usage? I'm one of those 61 people. It wouldn't have a hill of beans of difference to me. It would add $46 to my sewer bill. But I'm a very small user, so... So with that, I don't know, Ken, if you have something you want to say to get us started, and we'll take it from there.
All right. So I'm Ken Jakes. I'm currently the Chair of the Water Precinct.
Yeah, why don't you introduce your family, your Commissioner family?
This is Rip Cross, who's a Commissioner, John McKenna, who's a Commissioner, Rob Thorpe is the Superintendent, Steve Zuback was invited here by the Selectmen of New London. He's one of the Selectmen in the town of Springfield. I guess we reviewed the information that you had sent to us, the Commissioners, and I... My first look at it is that maybe we need to make sure we're on the same page. So your proposal seems to me that this...
Ideas.
Okay. Ideas would be that you would operate under this auspice all the time. Whereas, you said that a year and a half ago, we had water restrictions, water regulations. That's something we've had since 1980, but it's always just been, this is how we operate. And out of one of the sanitary surveys with the state, they said you probably ought to put something in writing so that you're not the only ones that know about it. So all we did was formalize it. And typically, our way of dealing with a water shortage situation would be that we would implement voluntary water ban and conservation measures if we felt that it was jeopardizing our ability to produce water. And our ability to produce water is defined very simply. We have X amount of capability of pumping water off Kobe Point. We have a one and a half million gallons of storage total. We have a million up in the woods near the old reservoirs. We have a half a million here underground at the college. Our metric is that if we run into a situation where we are pumping 24 hours a day, nonstop water into the pump station, and the pump station is then moving that water up into the system, and what the system does not consume goes back to fill the tanks, and when he comes in in the morning and says, you know, calls me or whatever, and says, "We haven't made any water last night. We lost 18 inches in the tank," we would typically look at that and say, "Well, let's take a look at it tomorrow and see what happens." And if it's the same thing tomorrow, we are probably putting on a voluntary water ban. So that is how we would work with... So I think we're talking about two different things. I think you're talking about water conservation in general throughout the precinct and/or the town, and we're talking about water conservation when we need the water, because we're in a critical situation. So, and I'm speaking strictly for myself, we've not discussed this as a board, I'm not sure we would ever implement a nonstop water ban, odd even watering, just because. Because we have the capability of pumping that water. And let's say, for example, in the proposal or in the ideas, topics for discussion, we were to have a scenario where you had three days at 300,000 gallons of water, then you would, according to this, it would trigger some sort of water conservation. The problem with that is, and I know Rob could give you an example, one time this summer, so I believe it was July?
July.
July, of all the days in the month, only four days did we not pump over 300,000 gallons of water, which means that entire month you'd have been in a critical situation. One of the other problems that comes into this is the enforcement of it. And if you were to have... What we've done in the past, and the town's been great about that, and it's typically been the police chief's call, is that we have instituted the water ban, gotten the word out, either through our own way of disseminating information and also along with the town, and it has had a very good response overall to correcting the problem. And literally within 24 hours, we are back in the production of water so that we're not losing water. The enforcement of it is very difficult. There's Rob and two assistants and a woman that works in the office. It happens to be a woman now working in the office. There is no time for us to be out pounding on doors, and what we've done in the past is we've asked for, on the regular patrol of neighborhoods, streets, sections of town in the precinct, if the police department could either notify us and/or if somebody was outside, just mention to them, "Did you know that there was a water ban on right now?" And that has been very effective. Not that we run underwater bans all that often, but a lot of it is dependent on what are the... What is the usage? What time of the summer is it? Because we've found, and strictly just what we see, if it's early in the summer, gardens are in, lawns have been seeded, people tend to water more because they have a vested interest in seeing things propagate. If it's end of July, August, I don't think anybody cares at that point. They let it dry up and don't care, because it's an endless battle, and it's costing them a lot of money to try to fix it. So that's one of the variables that sits out there. I think that our system works better when it... Because of the hands-on evaluation, we have either Robbie and/or his assistants are at the pump station off of Kobe Point every morning to look at what's going on in the system. The communications come back to the SCADA system in his office, and he has the ability of knowing what is going on in each tank, how much the pumps are pumping, how much the clear well is being... How much of that is being moved up into the woods, how much is just being moved out into the system. And that varies, of course, depending on the time of day. You know, early in the morning, the usage is dramatic. As the day goes on, it tends to level out, and in the evenings, when people come home, it goes up again, and then it drops off. So, our system that we have in place is reacting to what's going on in the system. And I think that if you try to tie it to just, these are the numbers, and these numbers trigger this next reaction, you're going to be operating under a critical situation all the time. And we don't have the horses to run around and make sure that John's doing this and Mary's not doing that. It's just not there. I don't think... I don't think the town of New London would have the employees to say, "Well, we're gonna have two guys from the Highway Department, two police officers, to help out with that." I think it has to be an educational thing, which we have, you know, we've tried to do. We put it in our annual report. It's on the website. We have... Somebody gave me little cards that we have in the office, dealing with each drop of water and so forth. That information is only as good as what people will do with it. And so, I think that what we've done in the past has worked well as far as reacting to what could potentially be a crisis situation. You know, you wouldn't want the tank in the woods to be only half full, or the one here at the college only half full, at 7:00 o'clock in the morning, because you're gonna pound through a bunch of that water, and, you know, Lord help you if you had a fire, because you'd have no storage at all. I don't know about the deduct meters. I just know when they first went in, I said, "I think it's a bad idea," and it... Life went on, and that's fine. And I think that that's something that, you know, the town has to wrestle with. It serves as a deterrent to anyone who is looking to water a lot outside of what goes through the domestic meter. You know, all the water goes through the domestic meter, the water that goes out to Silcock or into an irrigation system then comes... Becomes deducted off of the sewer bill, not off the water bill. So they're still paying for the water, but they're not paying for the water going to Sunapee. And whether that's a deterrent or not, I don't know. It doesn't seem that money is the great motivator in slowing people down. Our experience, strictly our experience. Yeah, we've made... More recently, made another change. We'll know after this summer if it makes any difference, but in the past, it has not. You know, because it's been suggested, well, you need to just crank the rate on irrigation, and therefore, once... Because if you look at people's bills, they get billed twice a year. You know, certainly, the April reading is a lot lower than the October reading. And that... Some of that's a function of people out here in town, period, and they use their property nominally, they use it mostly in the summer, or it's a function of what they're doing with the water at their own homes. So, we have been, over time, we've had conversations with DES about whether or not we should be, you know, how do you deal with water bans? What should we do with water bans? They do not believe, is what we've been told, that we should be operating on a regular basis under a water ban. That's not an effective way to run the precinct, and at least the supply of water. So, that's the little bit that I know. And I'm not trying to be critical of what your points were or anything, I just know that what we've done in the past has seemed to work, and I think that it... For example, if you were to reach the 300,000 gallons a day, three days in a row, and then you instituted the water ban, that really doesn't... That helps with the amount of water that people are going to use on those days that they can use it. And the days they can't use it, they're going to use less water. But it doesn't make any difference to the well field. To not take water Tuesday doesn't mean there's more water Wednesday. You know, it doesn't work that way. You know, the pumps pump on an oscillating basis. They draw down, come back up, draw down, come back up. And if they... If there's no demand, they just sit there, fall. So that, if you have the ability to move that water into the system, I... We believe you should take advantage of it, just because you don't know what's going to happen day to day. And weather is a huge, huge deterrent to using water, unless it's Main Street and everybody's on timers. And we've tried to address that as much as we can, you know, we talked about this. A day of rain is almost like nothing... It's... Now, there's no problem at all with the water. The water consumption drops overnight. So, that's the little bit I know.
So, I want to let Janet and Bebe and your gang talk about this and see what reaction we get from the audience. I think there's a fundamental sort of, maybe, difference of opinion or thought about what we're talking about in terms of conservation. You're really focused on the capacity of the wells. And sort of on a much broader society basis, some of us are concerned in general about water and where it's coming from and where it's going and so on. And so, hence why the thought is, if there are ban... And the bans, and so, those are just examples. The bans are, once a summer, should it be just those people who happen to be in the precinct? Or shouldn't the rest of the residents of Springfield and New London, you know, have to have the same rules, just as we're talking about with Springfield and other towns in the watershed for septic rules? So, there's just a question about, are we talking about conservation as a society, or are we talking about the capacity coming out of the wells? So I think that's the major sort of difference here. And obviously, much of the discussion over the last year or so about water in town has been about capacity, not about conservation. So, and so, I think coming out of that, you and I know where this discussion started, was, is there something to be said about conservation as well as about capacity? But no. But Janet and Bebe ought to have a chance to talk, and Rip and Don if they want, and so on.
I just had a quick question. How many times have you put into place that voluntary water ban? Is it once a year? Is it multiple times a year, or is it...
We were just talking about that. Up until we went on to Kobe Point, water bans were all the time, because the Morgan Pond Watershed, uncertain years, could not handle the amount of water.
Right.
And there was quite a lot of dialogue between the town and the precinct in the mid-'80s, early-'80s about whether or not the growth of the town, growth of... So the business district, the college, and the hospital was anything that the precinct could even think about absorbing. And we should talk about that, because I don't know if anybody even knows about that, sitting at that table. It's been a long time. There was a study committee and some ideas that came out of it. Kobe Point kind of solved some of those issues. So, once we went on to Kobe Point, it was less prevalent, and particularly at the inception of using Kobe Point as the new water source, because the water capacity to provide water to the community was more than it is now.
Yep.
You know this, the efficiency of the wells. So, I would say, I don't know, here you go. You're in charge.
So, you know, it's very weather-dependent, as everyone knows. When we get into a drought situation, it's typically when we have these issues. And I would say, since 2000, we've gone underwater bans at a maximum five times. So, you know, it's not often, and the response, like Ken said, is always great. I mean, it's... We don't mandate anything, we just put it out there, and it's almost like someone turned a switch off. People in this community are very responsive to it. I mean, yeah, there's been a few that have had to go up and shut their Silcock off, because they got a sprinkler going and it's watering the pavement. But, you know, it's... It really hasn't been a critical issue as far as, you know, controlling it, because of the community and their responsiveness to it. And typically, if you just go out and have a conversation with them, you know, they understand and they're willing to comply. Again, we don't mandate that they can't water, we just try to regulate the hours that they do it.
Yep.
And that's between 7:00 AM and 7... No, 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM.
Yep.
But I would say, at max, you know, five, five years we've had to do it.
In the last three...
Yeah.
So, I think what Bill's... What we're looking for is, is there a way... Bans aren't a way that we could keep those well... The well field pumping at a... That's not a way to do it. Do you know ways to do it?
More water.
More water, okay.
You know, otherwise, you know, you're gonna continue to be in this situation when you have a drought, drought year. Unless you've got unlimited amounts of water, you're going to have to restrict, you know, at some point. As far as, you know, what Bill was saying, you know, I did look at the, you know, the suggestions, and, you know, 300,000 just is... Operationally, it's way too low, because, again, we would be under a water ban conditions in perpetuity, you know, all summer long.
Mm-hmm.
And at 300,000 gallons, we're not necessarily losing in the tank, and that's our call, and that's what we focus on, is the amount of water we have in the tank, because we need to keep at least 18 feet of water in the tank for fire protection.
18 feet.
It's not so critical now that we have the booster station, but we still try to maintain that, to be on the safe side. The water tank's full at 25 feet. So, let's say I come in on a Monday, and the pumps have run 24/7, we're at 24 feet. The next day, I come in, and we're at 23/5. The pumps have run 24 hours. So, third day, okay, that would put us, you know, into a water ban situation, you know, based on the suggestions, you know? But I know it's gonna rain for the next two days. You know, that's a judgment call that the operators need to make at that point. That's not, you know, you can't just throw numbers at it. You've got to look at the total situation, and whether or not you have ample water for fire protection and domestic use. And, you know, that's a... It's a case-by-case situation. It's, no pun intended, it's very fluid operation, it changes. So, that's how we've done it, and that's how we, you know, you know, we think it works best.
Enforcement is clearly an issue, just so you know.
Yeah.
Because there's just... These guys work all spring, summer, early fall, because that's when you can do water work. You know this, you just watched Main Street.
Yep.
So, to say that they're gonna be running around banging on doors and not being able to replace the hydrants they have, change the curbs that are junked, that have been plowed out, and work on valves...
Yep.
I mean, I don't know when you'd get that work done, is the thing. Spend all day running around.
And again...
Do you have sort of a procedure in place where you read the meters at some point, and you say, "This person's usage is extremely high"?
Well, typically, though, that'll come up, you know, to our attention when we do the billing.
Yeah.
So, twice a year, we do the billing, and, you know, it's not uncommon that we have high usage, and Rhonda will send us out, you've got to go see what's going on here.
Yeah.
And, you know, several of them this year that I had to go out on were people that were watering that had deduct meters.
Yeah.
And, you know, they had, you know, they used 80,000 gallons of water, and 50,000 of it went on their lawn.
Mm.
You know, so, you know, and you talk to them, and they're just like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I know."
Yeah.
"I got a lot of money invested in this."
Yeah, yeah.
So...
I'm good at the moment, yeah.
So I think where we're going with this is, conservation will not increase capacity.
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay. So, where are we with the engineering on doing something about the wells off of Kobe Point?
My turn again? So, they're two months into it, roughly. There were five tasks that we went ahead and approved the money for. I think they're into the third task at this point. They had to get some stuff done before the frost was in the ground. And we've told everyone, it's going to be late spring before we have any analysis of it, because they still have two tasks, two and a half tasks to complete. I know all the transducers are still out there, they're leaving them for a couple of weeks. And, you know, we hope to have something by late spring as to what they tell us with respect to Kobe Point. Now, I don't know what that's gonna be. You were at the other meetings. We've had different opinions from different people and... Or different departments, and, you know, we... Maybe I'm feeling lucky, we're gonna hit the lottery. It's gonna be great. And there's gonna be new technology and a way that we can, you know, rejuvenate what's going on out there, or use that new technology to provide more water. It may come back saying, "You guys are doing what you can do." I don't know. And that just... If that's the case, then we need to go on to phase two, which is, where are we going for the next water? So, that's really all we know about it at this point. Other than letting them on and off the point and helping them run wires, we haven't had any conversations. All they've said is, "We're gathering data."
And it's a huge amount of data. So it's gonna take some time for them to correlate everything and see what, you know, how much of that affects the well while it's pumping. It's just, there's a lot of moving parts out there, and these guys are really good at what they do, and I have faith that they're gonna, you know, at least come up with at least a...
Oh.
You know, I have all the faith in the world that they're gonna come up with... You know, at the very least, you know, get Kobe Point running as efficiently as it possibly can, and that, you know, that may be a fair amount, it might not be much, but, you know, at least we'll know, we're running that system as efficiently as we can, and that's what we're gonna get.
You know, and that's been part of the problem with the differences of opinion. You know, you... We've talked with, you know, Underwood about it, and when we had the study done on looking by Emery and Garrett on water all in and around this area, where is there water? And you saw those results. I mean, there's water, but a long ways from where we're standing right now. And originally, Underwood had said, "It's probably the amount of money that it would take to make Kobe Point more efficient might be more money than it's worth. You're not gonna get a lot of value for the money that you spend." At the same time, DES had a guy who, you know, keeps saying, "Well, you're rated for 750,000 gallons, that's your maximum draw." Well, it's fine, we don't... We can't get it out of the ground, but that is the rating. That'd be great if we could. So, there's still some dialogue there with them to find out whether they have any suggestions. You know, to be fair, in the 30 years we've been out on Kobe Point, we've never had any interest in telling us how efficient it's... How less efficient or more efficient your wells are. You know, and suddenly, everyone's chiming in with, you know, "What the heck are you guys doing? We've got these great ideas." Excellent, let's see if we can get them to come to fruition. And that's what Emery and Garrett is doing. That's an $80,000 project, and we'll see what it yields. I hope it has some beneficial results, so...
As you know, we want to assure the people who are on town water that they will continue to get it. And the other thing is, we really want to be able to, if we know we need housing, and is there a way to offer municipal water to something coming forward, like Twin Pines? So, those are the two things we're interested in, but first and foremost is, we want to make sure that the people who are currently in the water precinct will be assured that they have water.
I can assure you, you know that's our position.
I hope so.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we're charged to do, so... Yeah. We've told everybody, when we have it, you can have it.
So...
Could I just say one more thing, Bill?
Certainly can.
This is important. You know, we've talked and kicked around about having an informational session with anyone who wants to come to it, where we can answer questions, be asked questions, we can give some historical information. Right now, and whether anybody agrees with it or not, I'm paying for it, so I'm gonna listen to it, our attorneys have told us they do not want us having that type of forum until things are settled with the lawsuits. So, it's in the back of our minds, and we've discussed it with them, and they've asked us to hold off on that. So, we are fully intentioned to have that type... And I think that that could be a forum where you could accentuate conservation of water to people and make them understand how important it is. The only last thing, or one of your things, I think it's gonna be hard to regulate outside the precinct where people are on their own wells. Might get a little pushback, I don't know. That's just my thought. I just thought it's...
So, the entire list of things that we gave you was just a shopping list of...
I get it.
Things that hopefully, nothing new would come up that wasn't there, like the numbers were also only intended to be...
Right.
Yeah. If we had said 400, would the answer be different, and so on? So let me see what's... Let's just sort of see what the people sitting behind you are thinking, if anybody wants to chime in at this point, because we've been at this almost a half an hour.
You've got another meeting.
What? I know you've got another meeting, but Chief Cobb is here, and she'll get you there on time on her cruiser, so... What? I know you've got another meeting, but, uh, uh, the chief, chief cop is here and she'll get you there on time on her cruiser, so. So does anybody in the, in the audience, the residents, want to chime in at all or just say something? Colin.
Good evening, Colin Beasley, a New London resident. Probably a question for the commission and the select board as they deem appropriate. When the studies are done, what's your guess on the time between the studies' conclusion and recommendations? And I know it's going to be variable, but it's kind of a multi-part question. How long will it take to implement those recommendations? You know, is it a six months, is it a year, is it a year and a half? And, and what's your affordability on the part of the precinct? Because I know that you've presented to the town the need for some collaboration, for seeking alternative sites and funding. So how does the whole funding discussion and recommendation discussion happen here so that we can make progress?
I don't, I don't think it happened, is this working?
Yes.
I don't think it happens yet. I think that, um, you're going to get the recommendations back from Emery and Garrett with regards to Colby Point. Nothing's going to happen in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
Twenty-six.
No money to do that, I don't even know what to allocate for money. So you would have to, then have to determine whether or not those recommendations are viable with, to throw money at. So you, let's just hypothetically, they say, oh, if you did such, you could probably get this. And we would say, well, that's a pretty good return on the dollar. You would then go for engineering money in twenty-six. And then the people that raise their hands have to raise their hands to approve it. And then you'd, and twenty-seven would probably be when you'd go for the project. So, you know, I've said this before and I talked to Adam Rick about it a long time ago. I did, you know, developing a new water source is eight to ten, municipal water source, eight to ten years of time. If it was just Colby Point and you could make some changes, you know, that, that could probably happen in two to three years. But I don't even know what I'm talking about.
Understood, right. The reason for the question is it sort of puts a timeline around what we're talking about here, right, so.
Funding would, would probably be a function of what comes out of the report and what we chose to do.
Yeah.
I mean, if we can't afford to do it, we could be saying, well, these folks are saying, you know, is, is this something that we?
So the timeline, I'm putting words in your mouth, let me know if I'm right or wrong. The timeline between today and having some solution, in, in the best scenario, we're talking two or three years.
Yeah.
So from a development point of view, availability of development, we're talking three years out, right? And the need potentially to deal with the funding requirement on the precinct's products and/or the town of London and Springfield.
Yeah, unless there was grant money available, it seems like you start having grants, grant money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Anybody else, questions, comments, commentary? Okay, would you do one thing favor for me? Oh, did I miss somebody? Greg, sorry, didn't, didn't turn my head to the, far enough to the right.
Hi, Greg Berger, own Springledge Farm here in town. And just reading through your, your list of possible scenarios, I just want to say that we use, the majority of our water, well over ninety-nine percent, is irrigation and has nothing to do with the sewer. So I think if the sewer, if we had to pay sewer rates for that water, it would be in the, you know, thirty-four thousand dollars. Yes, yeah, our bill would go from, say, four hundred to thirty thousand, which is not doable at this point for us. When, I do also want to mention, I know we are a major user of water in the precinct. And we've worked well with, with Rob and company. And over the last ten, fifteen years, we've really implemented quite a few conservation practices. Half of, more than half of our greenhouses now recycle all their water for growing plants. And out in the field, we use majority of drip irrigation, which the conservation on that is about forty percent more than, than using an overhead sprinkler. And we're, I'm definitely open to more conservation measures and also educational type things. We have a good way to explain to people, especially gardeners, because a lot of this has to do with watering lawns and gardens. You know, we can, happy to set something up if there's a joint effort to educate people as much as we possibly can about conservation, so.
Thanks, thanks Greg. Anybody else, if I turn my head more, I guess, Karen?
Hello all, Karen Epstein. What, um, I guess it's a... Yep, it's on.
You get closer to it then?
What I have is really probably more a comment and maybe some clarification, I don't know whether tonight's the night for it. What caught my eye was point number seven, where water restrictions, blah, 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 may be instituted by the Water Precinct, the London Board, a selectman and/or the Springfield Board, a selectman, when it is determined by that governing body to be in the best interests of the precinct or the town. And that just seemed to be a lot of people in charge. And so I know this is just for a discussion tonight and so you invited people to come up with a, a comment. So that just jumped out to me as confusing, that would need a lot of clarification. And my understanding, I'm, I'm in the precinct and it's been clear to me that the precinct has been operating in the best in, interest of the precinct. And so I'm really not clear what this means, what would be in the best interest of the precinct or the to, or town. So that number seven has a lot of language in there that I think is really not clear. And I know tonight's a discussion, but I just wanted to pass that opinion on, thank you.
Thank you. Ken, to, to make sure that I don't make a mistake later in the meeting, can we make sure we not, understand the years that you're talking about? When you say fiscal twenty-five, we think we're in fiscal twenty-five now that ends in June, but you, but...
We're not.
You're not.
We're going into it right now.
Our fiscal year's...
Right, so I, that's why I want to make sure for the people of the audience, the Water Precinct is on a different fiscal year than the town. So when he says twenty-five, he means right now, as of nine days ago. For us, fiscal twenty-five means ends June thirtieth. So just think about that when you're thinking about the, the years. The second thing is, I think on Monday night at the commissioners' meeting, you talked about some potential money on the warrant of sixty-some thousand dollars and then maybe a grant. Could you just explain to people where the eighty thousand comes in, where the sixty thousand comes in? Because you may not get this many people at your annual meeting.
Well, yeah, it's pretty simple. We, we felt it was, it, because of some of the other meetings that had transpired more recently, it was probably in the best interest for everyone to get the evaluation of Colby Point going. That being said, there was no money to do that. We had twenty thousand dollars in a warrant article for evaluation of water sources, so we used that immediately. We did sign a contract with Emery and Garrett and for seventy-eight thousand dollars, I believe, the five tasks. And we will have a warrant article this year in the warrant to pay the balance to Emery and Garrett. But there was a thirty thousand dollar grant that was, that Rip applied for. And we were very surprised and we got a grant money, but we did. And it's a fifty-fifty, so of, let's just say the sixty thousand dollars left, fifteen of that'll come from the state grant and we'll have to raise forty-five thousand dollars. So we were able to do some management of billing to put it into this year, so we're anticipating.
I understood that, but I wanted to make sure. I was reporting tonight that I...
Creative.
Right out, right out of your mouth.
Creative financing.
Creative financing.
You know, if I have to pay for it myself, I will.
Everybody record that, Mr. Jakes will pay for it himself.
We just thought it was the best thing to do because there's been so much interest. Yeah, I mean, Rip is just mentioning, so the, the water project on Main Street was a five million dollar project. We got a, a very good bit of three point nine five, I believe it was, contingency money in there, engineering put in there. But at the end of the day, the project has come in, it, it, we're going to throw half a million dollars as the number, but it, it might be a little bit more than that. So the project came in substantially under what we anticipated. Most of it was in the cost of reconstruction of Main Street and conversations with the state and how much of the pavement we actually disturbed. Because originally, the whole project was based on paving, the whole project from the center line out to the sidewalk. But they didn't do that type of disturbance and the state was okay, except for, I believe, two hundred and fifty feet. So that's, you, you pave roads in this town, you know how much that costs. Huge savings in not having to deal with that. And the speed at which the project took, took place also saved an awful lot of money. So those monies aren't available yet to us, they're going to be held in that non-lapsing warrant article until we get all the bells and whistles taking care of the spring. Because I'm sure there'll be some issues, some cleanup here and there. And then tho, that money which has already been raised could potentially be used for, you know...
In a, in a year or two, might come down about the same time you hear about the, um, Colby Point and whether this money...
I hope I hear about Colby Point before that.
Okay, good. I just thought, as long as you were here, we'd clarify that and everybody can hear at the same time. Okay, with that, uh, uh, final comment, I will say thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay until your next meeting. Steve, thank you for coming out from Springfield and joining us.
I'm not going to take that home. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you all, five of you. Okay, while they are leaving, the next item on our agenda is the public comments. Are there any public comments on anything that was not on our remaining agenda this evening? Bob.
Good evening, how is everyone tonight? My name is Bob Bowers and I'm a resident of New London. Recent discussions at the police station have centered around the selectmen's choice of the Garvey property on Siemens Road as the preferred...
Excuse me, Bob, uh, the police station is on the agenda for this evening.
And I'm going to ask you to take up something at that point.
Okay, well, you wait till we get there, please.
You would like me to wait till you get there?
Thank you. Anybody else have a public comment on something that's not on our agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none, then the next item on the agenda is indeed the police facilities project. And we're going to talk about four different aspects of that tonight before we get to public comments. We're going to get an update on where we are on the potential site on Siemens Road. We're going to talk about a, a debt analysis and how much the town can, can afford. We're going to talk about the future of the advisory committee and the role they, they might play in this. And then last but not least, we will talk about what the, the calendar may look like from here. So, um, and whatever else anybody else wants, but we're at least get through those things. So Kim, would you bring us up to date on the discussions with the Garvey Cleveland family, please?
The Garvys, Garvey Trust has agreed to sell a four acre parcel to the town for three hundred and fifty thousand. So where we are right now is in, speaking with town council about drawing up the purchase and sale agreement with some conditions that the Garvys want to place on the land. And assuming that those all pass muster with the, with town council, or if he doesn't have any issues with it, we'll have it to present to the selectmen and the public, I would expect in a week or two, hopefully.
Okay, um, either way, you have questions about that, that's pretty, pretty straightforward. Okay, next of all, um, you know, we have been working, as you, as you know, this process for over, well over a year now. And as expected, you know, each day we get something new to talk about. And I think we've followed the steps openly and transparently as we can. And so got to put some new information out there tonight in terms of what may be the limits on the amount of money that the town should be borrowing to do a project like this, which may in turn address some of the questions that people have had along the way in terms of what the cost might look like. I'll just start this, but I think we'll have a fairly extended discussion about this. As, as many of you know, four years ago, there was a panel of several former selectmen who put together a report to the then-boarded selectman recommending a method for assessing what the limit ought to be on the town, on the town's amount of outstanding loan term debt. What we have done in the last couple of weeks since we last met is we have taken a look at where we stand in terms of, of debt, where all the various assumptions that have to be made to determine what that impact might be on the total outstanding, what the debt service might look like and so on. So I'm going to do, my colleagues have a memo in front of them, as do I, obviously. I'm just going to go through that and, and due course, this will be posted on the town website. Due course probably meaning tomorrow morning. But this is to help us understand where, where we are. And those of you that want to take quick notes on it, please, please do. It looks like, uh, looking at the end of this, our fiscal year in June, is if we'll have a little bit over two point nine million dollars of debt outstanding as of the end of this year. And that's after we pay this year's, um, principal and interest payments, some of which have been paid, some of which are still outstanding because we're only about halfway through our fiscal year at, at this point. If we were to suggest that the limitations that that group of selectmen put out to, four years ago, were implemented and we were to limit the amount of debt to no greater than ten percent of the annual general fund budget of the, of the town, that's the key number, ten percent of the annual general fund budget of the town, what would it look like in the end of nineteen, of two thousand and twenty-nine? If we were to continue with this project on the basis of which we've been talking about it? And the answer to that is that probably, and you, you'll have to understand that these numbers are now dependent on, on all the following. What's the equalized assessed value of the town going to be? What's the general town, general fund budget going to be? What revenue sources are we going to have? What unassigned fund balances are going to be used or could be used? What other projects are out there, et cetera, et cetera? But with all of those caveats, it appears that the maximum amount that we ought to be spending on a police facility is ten million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So for those of you that have been looking at twelve million, fourteen million, twenty-three million, pick your number, the number that we're suggesting here tonight to talk about is that we would probably not want to spend more than ten million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the police facility. Now, that's a round number, obviously. Kim just told you where the three fifty comes from, that's the site. And so what we want to talk about tonight is where, where do we go in terms of thinking about a ten million dollar police facility? And whether that's a viable path to go down, given all the information that we've gathered over the, um, last, last year. I think one of the things that's changed tremendously over this period of time is connected to the discussion we were just having with the water commissioners. Because as recently as a year ago, I think a case could have been made that a much higher debt commitment for the police project was likely to be able to be done because of the tax revenue benefit that we were going to get from the Twin Pines and Continuum projects. Most of the time, uh, was a couple of you will talk about, we don't always talk about revenue. But it did, appeared, sitting back in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three, that both of those projects were viable projects, about to put stays in the ground, water be served and so on. They were going to produce significant additional tax revenue to the town, which would have flowed through this formula and given us a very different answer at this point. So I think the sobering that I, is the term I've used, reality is with those two projects both now sitting in abeyance and with all the information we have, we have to seriously talk about whether or not we want to continue on the path we've been on or do we want to step back and see what, given all the information we have, what a ten million dollar facility would look like? The, the police chief may say to us, sorry, selectmen, if that's the answer, you know, don't, don't, don't spend any money at all. Or she might say to us, yes, let's continue to look at that because now you've given us some boundaries to, um, to look at. So I think we need to test that. I'm glad we have most of the police advisory committee with us this evening because they're going to weigh in on that also. And, and what we say about this potential limit may impact what work they do and what work we do going forward. So on that very sober piece of information, I... So on that very sober piece of information, I'll turn it over. You're smiling, BBC, you get to go first.
Well, I wanted, I would like to hear from the committee and any other members of the public. You're right, it's sobering, but it's reality and got to figure out how to make it work. Because we have to figure out how to make it work.
I might just add, this is a difficult discussion for me, because I happen to be one of the former selectmen that was on the committee that set up this limit. So you could say, oh, boy, don't you want to change that bill because, you know, your answer isn't the one that you wanted to have? And I say, no, because circumstances have changed. But just to give you perspective on how carefully the group of us looked at this four years ago, under RSA 334-A, we could borrow $61 million in this town. We're talking here about something in the teens as a limit. So just to let you know that we're in no way, shape, or form up against any legal constraint. This is our own conservatism. But the valuation of this town is so great that the statute allows us to borrow $61 million. Let me go. Janet?
No, I agree with you. We should hear what everyone seems to think.
Okay, so advisory committee, we'll start, there's all sitting, some of you sitting in the front row there, some over here. Who wants to start? Any reactions to that piece of information? Or? Ashley, I guess you're up first.
Thank you for that, and I thank you for being conservative. I think most of the residents in this.
Introduce yourself for the.
Sorry, Ashley Sebold, resident of New London, chair of the Police Facilities Advisory Committee. Thank you for being conservative. I think that's very much appreciated by the taxpayers in New London. For me, and I don't want to speak for my committee members here, I do think we owe this project justice in going forward with trying to see in this next phase, is there an opportunity for us to shave this budget down from what was presented to us, which was around 14 million? Or is there an opportunity to shave this down by four or $5 million to see if we can get something that still fits the needs of the department itself? That's my own personal opinion, but obviously would welcome my fellow committee members if they have any comments.
Okay, great. Don't all be quiet. Jimmy? You need to come up, unfortunately, because of the recording. That's the one thing that technology's done to us.
You mentioned that you.
Introduce yourself.
I'm James Grussoni, live here in town. You mentioned that right now you're carrying about 2.9 million in debt. By law, you can carry up to 61 million?
Yes.
Rough estimate, on average, what debt would you say historically you've carried in the past?
Well, it depends, obviously, when there's a big project. When the sewer project was first done, when the sewer project was first done, it was a substantial amount. And then that's worked down, so that, the town's share of that now is down to less than a million dollars. But if you were to, you know, if we were to have done, shared the road project here with the water precinct, we could have added another $4.8 million to that or some portion of it. So it does depend on the nature of the projects and the ups and the downs. Most of this outstanding debt, other than the sewer part of it, is for building repair projects that have been done over the last 10 years or so. A lot of library money, the academy building, the million dollars in the building we're sitting in right now, $600,000 in Bukeur recently, and so on. But I don't have the historical numbers, so I'm going to guess it maybe got up as high as 10 or 12 million dollars at one point. But that was relevant to a town that was assessed at about half the current value, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but it's a big number, there's no question about it. Others? Wait a minute, I'm still doing the, Colin, let me finish the advisory committee, and then I think Bob had the first hand on the.
Just looking at my committee members here, is there anyone that feels as if we should not continue on and exploring this 10.3, 10.4 million dollar figure?
Let me just make it clear, Ashley, and to everybody, that these are our numbers that we've done. We've not taken a CPA to it.
Sure.
Lynn, I told Lynn that we'll take full responsibility for these, if there are any mistakes in them, so nobody looks at her and says, oh, where'd that number come from, Lynn? She doesn't have those answers.
Yeah.
She does have the answer that we have 2.9 million outstanding. Everything else is, was projections about what the operating budget might look like.
Sure.
Going forward four years, what the valuation of the town might be, what other revenue sources we might have, et cetera, all made by us.
You know, I think one of the analogies that I've made in the past is, this is really like a video game, and every sort of phase that we take, it's like unlocking the next level of the video game. We hope we're going to end up winning this video game, but we might get to a point where we don't win. But it would be a shame if we didn't continue in the game to see where this could take us, and to see if we could shave off some of that initial number that we saw from Colliers and LBA.
Okay. Nobody else from the committee? Okay, Bob. I know you're back there somewhere.
I'm trying to hide.
Good evening. I'm still Bob Bowers, and I'm still a resident so far. In the past, the selectmen have gotten appraisals when they've bought real estate, and in fact, they did it with the Beaulieu property. And it's a common practice in all real estate transactions of a commercial nature, of a large nature. And so I'm asking if you will vote and consider, in fact, I think you should, I think the voters want it, to take an appraisal of this. It may or may not affect people's opinion on whether to buy or not, but I think they should have the information and have the opportunity to see what an appraisal says. And so I ask that you vote tonight to indeed obtain an appraisal of the property. Do you think you will do that?
We'll talk about it in a minute, but.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else that you wanted to? While you're up? Nope. Do you want to respond to that, Kim, or you want us to, or how? Okay, my answer, Bob, is we're not going to get an appraisal. I would not support getting an appraisal. Our experience on the Beaulieu land was that there are no comparables available that a, the level of sophistication of appraisal that's done in this area would bring forth. The most significant comparable that we have is, several years ago, on the purchase and sale of the land that Colonial Pharmacy is on right now, it bore no resemblance to any appraisal that would have been done on that property. So I think we'll stand or fall on the fact that a reasonable, two reasonable parties reaching agreement on a sale doesn't require an appraisal that probably isn't going to be very, very helpful. But I'm happy to look to Bebe and Jan, having been through this so recently on the Beaulieu property, we know the quality of appraisal is not very high.
My gut would say that we're getting a pretty good deal with the market, the way it's been the past few years. But I guess I would ask, Kim, if you wanted to run it by the attorneys, if they think we should get one, but.
You certainly can. I mean, I think that it's something the town can do or not do. I don't think conservation typically does when they have purchased land, and the reason for that is, the people who are selling the land are, this is the price. If you want to buy it, buy, and the conservation commission generally needs the land because it's, you know, an important piece of land that they've had on their list to conserve. So, but again, the selectmen could, as they did with Beaulieu, but they don't have to. And I can certainly run it by town council to see if he thinks that there's any other underlying reason that might encourage you to do it.
I guess I feel that this is a more than fair price for this property. And based on comments we had the last time when we got the appraisal for the Beaulieu property, there were many people, and I'm looking at you, Joe, who advised us against getting an appraisal. So I think that we just have to go with the fact that we think it's fair and move forward on it.
Yeah, I think because we also know the seller here as being a citizen of the town who wants to see the right thing done by the town, that the seller is not out to make a big profit on this sale of land. Joe?
Joe Cardillo, New London resident. You are correct. Two of my questions were answered and asked already. I had two questions coming in tonight. One, will we enter into a purchase and sales agreement? And the reason I was asking the first question is because the second question really revolves around a purchase and sales agreement, and that's an appraisal. I'm sure there's a lot of us who don't have an appetite to continue to spend more money on appraisals and studies. We've spent in excess of $110,000 this year already on this project. Over the last five years, we're now approaching, it's over $225,000, I think, in studies we've done relating to this. So another $6,000 or $7,000 on an appraisal, I certainly don't have an appetite to do that. I will only suggest this. We never got to a purchase and sales agreement that was executed last time. And I would state that that's part of the reason the appraisal did not come in appropriately. If it was under agreement at a certain price, just my professional opinion and experience suggests it would have come in at the price. Whether we want to buy that land, or you're in favor of it, or not in favor, the reason I was going to ask about an appraisal, not that I'm in favor of spending the money, is just simply for consistency. Last time, the board felt strongly, we should give the voters all the information we could possibly give them, so we should have an appraisal. This year, it sounds different, which I'm fine with. I just want to ensure we get to a purchase and sales agreement. Whether there's contingencies, that it's approved by the voters, et cetera, will we have a high confidence level that we'll get this one executed? Because we never got the last one executed.
We didn't execute the last one because the town didn't support, provide the money for us. We had a purchase and sale agreement subject to town approval.
We never, we never had an executed purchase and sales agreement. Not even with a contingency. And that's why, I'm just hopeful we get there this time. That's the only reason I wanted those two questions put on the table tonight. So it sounds like we're moving to it. I'm hopeful we get it executed. And again, I don't see a problem with reaching the price that they're asking for. I don't think there's going to be an issue.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Colin, I think you were back, next in line.
Colin Beasley, New London resident. Bill, so thank you for the sobering analysis. I think it's important for us to appreciate that. Does it include in the analysis any future debt beyond the police station? Should the town be confronted with something like a water issue? Does that further constrain that number? Or did you have any assumptions in there for that?
Good question. Thank you, Colin. The data that I operated, that we operated with over the last week or so in doing this included $3.3 million to renovate Bukeur for other use. It did not include anything for fire facility or equipment, because those are things that come out of capital reserves. And with an almost 10-year time horizon here, the town should do that with capital reserves. We should have done that with the police station 20 years ago, we didn't. So there we are. As far as water capacity is concerned, I think you just heard Ken say that that is a 10- to 20-year project out there if the Colby wells don't come forward. He said it was way too early to talk about how that would be financed and so on. So given the timeline that we're working with here and looking for where we would stand in 2029, no, there's nothing for water in there, and there's nothing in there for buying additional conservation land, because I think the town has agreed that that's also one of those unknowns out there. And given how much we all like conservation in this town, we'll figure out a way to do conservation if and when it ever has to be done. So the answer to your question is $3.3 million for Bukeur was included, but nothing else of that nature. And the only other items in the most recent CIP that need to be looked at are all items that are covered through capital reserves. As important for the budget committee as they, since they're here, are, put this advertisement out, that they look very closely at where they stand in capital reserves at this point.
I agree, I think, with everything you're saying. Just one person's opinion, obviously. The only possible risk there is whether or not the Colby Point initiative has a high price level that the water precinct can't deal with. But I guess we cross that bridge when we get to it, right?
I would also say, and I don't know whether Janet and Bebe are going to agree with me on this, that we're, I'm certainly not thinking that we're going to ask the town for $10 million this year. The question is, we're going to ask the town for the next stage of.
Understood, yeah. But I think what's important is that the town understand what the end game is, so they appreciate in their first decision what that looks like, right? Yeah.
And again, I'm going to, you know, stand on my soapbox and say, I think we have tried for the whole year here to say, we're going to work a process, we're going to go step through step through step, and see where we come out. We did not start with an answer, and we obviously still don't have an answer.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Others? Goodness, what a quiet group tonight, huh? So Ashley. Oh, the chief wants to speak. You didn't put your hand up very high.
You weren't looking in my direction, Bill. No, that's all right.
You were hiding behind Greg.
Yes, strategically placed. Emily Cobb, police chief. I've been the police chief here for just a shade under five years. And certainly during my tenure as your police chief, this has been a common thread in the conversation about the police department and what to do. And from the very outset of my involvement in this project as the chief, there have definitely been times where I have felt that it's been a little bit directionless. And there's an idea of what we would like to do and what some would like to do in the town, but I have felt, I think, more encouraged than ever in the past year and with the steps that have been taken and the efforts made by citizens in this town to get to the point where it's a palatable solution for everybody. And I think that's really important to note, that I feel the numbers that I listened to here tonight is good, because it kind of gives you, it gives me anyway, something a bit more tangible to work with when talking with the Police Facilities Advisory Committee, talking with the consultant, or with the architects, the firm. It just, it gives us kind of an end game and an idea in our head of an actual direction to go to. So I think that that number tonight is very helpful to proceed forward. And I look forward to being a part of that conversation and working with everyone in town, certainly the committees that are assigned to this project, but everyone and the healthy and robust debate that will undoubtedly occur as we go forward. So, thank you.
Thank you for your support through all of this. I know this has not been easy for you. Ashley.
You had called my name before, so, before Chief Cobb came up, so I thought I'd just come up preemptively and see what you had to say for me.
I think that what we want to do at this point is ask the committee to have one more session with Tony, and to ask Tony to come with the knowledge of what we've just talked about and talk to us about what the implications of that would be, both in terms of the type of structure that we could build and the size of the structure, because the two are interchanged. And with that information, then come back to our next meeting on the 23rd, which, when we start talking at the end tonight about calendar, is very tight because of notice that we have to give, public notice we have to give for the budget hearing on the 5th of February, when we have to be able to say to the community, what is it we're going to try to appropriate? And at this point, we have $350,000 on a purchase and sale agreement that has not yet been completely done, but sounds like it's in pretty good shape. And then we have a whole range of what next steps might be, which I can't really. I can't really imagine without some more discussion with Tony. And so, that's what I would suggest. And then, but as a contingency beyond that, we're going to go to the budget committee with something. And then I would hope that maybe you or some part of your committee, I don't mean you, you, the collective group, could begin some discussions about how you would have small group discussions in town to explain to people what we're doing and how we've gotten from where we were a year ago to where we are now. We can't start to have those meetings yet because we don't know what the script is, do we?
Exactly. Yep. And Annie Beck has kindly agreed to step up as co-chair and really help us think about a strategic communication plan. And she and I have very loosely started to think about what some of those talking points are that we're already aware of. But you're exactly right. We need some of these things to flush out before we can build that out a bit more.
So it seems to me we need your involvement, because you've been in this for, you, collective group, again, for another round here. But we're on a short time schedule. And so if we can, if you can gather that group and Tony and the selectmen sooner rather than later, I think that would be very useful, whether Zoom or in-person or whatever.
Yeah, I can reach out to him tomorrow if you'd like, and just see if we can get something on the calendar and reach out to our committee members here. Oh, the 17th. I don't know if that's real or not. I think that is just a continuation of the original meeting series. So we could keep it, but I do just want to make sure that that is a date that everyone on the committee can actually stick to. So I can connect with our committee tomorrow and then also Tony and see if that 17th would work. I guess that's next week.
Good, okay. Either one of you go further into this tonight? Does that make sense?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, committee, for coming out this evening on a nice snowy evening.
Thank you.
Look forward to some feedback from people who haven't chosen to speak yet about where we've come down on our other sobering news this evening, but we'll see where that goes. Next item on the agenda is to take a look at a revised proposal for the Fire Department budget for fiscal year 2026. Jay, will you do the honors of introducing your fire wards and other fire staff that are here for this discussion? I might just say as a preliminary here that some of you may find this sobering news also, in terms of what Jay is about to present to us. But I remind everybody that budget is a continuing process right up to and through the final vote at town meeting. And I think that realistically, we'd like to get news like we got two weeks ago from the hospital, that the ambulance cost is going to go down, but sometimes costs are going to go up. And I think that what's happened here is the fire wards and the fire staff have looked more closely at the demographic issues that they talked about briefly in some other meetings, and the reality of what police, excuse me, Fire Department staffing needs to look like into the future. And we're not just looking at one year. We need to keep planning for what we know is already on the horizon. And I think that's why Jay is back with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the great introduction. Select Board members, I'd like to, most of you know the Board of Fire Wards, our retired Deputy Chief Peter Lauritsen, retired Captain out of Weston, Mass, John Ryan, and our retired New Hampshire State Fire Marshal, Bill Degnan. One of our lieutenants, Andrew Sarnavitz, and Ralph Tingley, who's another retired fire marshal, not the state fire marshal, but a fire marshal. So we've got a plethora of knowledge with us this evening. First of all, thank...
But appropriately to what you were just saying, all but Andrew had the word retired in front of their day.
Yeah, and hence the reason why I'm here this evening. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to visit. And first and foremost, my apologies for the delayed modification to the Fire Department's budget. You all received my letter, and not to be redundant, but for years, you've heard me talk about the issues with regards to retention and recruitment within the fire service. Unfortunately, New London Fire Department's operating model that has worked so well for so many years isn't as effective as it was in the past. And recently, I've heard, and I guess throughout the years, at various meetings, about the importance of long-term planning. And this is certainly what the Fire Department and the fire wards have been doing. As recently as the beginning of December, we met for a work session and strategic planning to look at things like facilities, apparatus acquisition, and succession planning for the future. However, when it comes to staffing levels, it's a little bit more complicated. And certainly, just throwing money at a deficiency isn't a fix for some sort of problem. So what is the problem? Really, the issue is coverage for nights and weekends. So as you all know, for 25 years, we've been staffed Monday through Friday, because typically, that's when people are working with full-time personnel. When our members are working out of town or are not able to respond, those individuals are able to cover during the daytime shifts. However, on nights and weekends, those shifts are covered by on-call officers. The problem is having individuals sign up for those nights. What we're finding is no longer are nine officers rotating through and actually using, instead of fire officers, our firefighters, which certainly individuals like Ralph has been great as far as covering some nights and weekends. However, this is not a sustainable model. And so there has been a societal change that's more focused on family and other commitments, and therefore, there's a little bit more reluctance to take calls on weekends, holidays, overnight shifts, and hence the modification to our request. When preparing the budget, the Board of Fire Wards and I were hoping that additional full-time or career staffing could be applied for through the SAFER grant. This is a federally-funded grant. It stands for Staffing Inadequate Fire and Emergency Response, which would pay for, our proposal was going to be to the Select Board coming up this spring, for three individuals. It would cover salaries, benefits for three full years. The issue is that this is a competitive grant, and our concern is that not only at the end of the grant is there a budget impact that's more substantial, but there's only two departments in the state that were recipients. The city of Manchester received just over $3.7 million in Hampstead out of all the towns that had applied. So with that being said, our request, in an effort to not have as large of an impact, and certainly any budget request, we understand any request is an impact on the taxes. And I'm tasked with, how do we provide adequate service to the townspeople while still being fiscally responsible to the citizens of New London? So our recommendation would be to put in for fiscal year 2026, a single position. And therefore, if approved by the Board of Selectmen, if we then applied for a grant and we didn't receive the grant, we wouldn't be another 18 months behind the eight ball of the staffing. And I wouldn't necessarily say crisis, but I'm looking at the Schedule Board, and someone just signed up today for this coming Friday. So in the past, we used to have two, three months filled with on-call officers. That is no longer the case. There's a shift covered in February and a shift, a single day, covered in March. So although the Budget Committee is currently vetting the various department requests, I felt it important that prior to me meeting with the Budget Committee, and again, thank you for meeting with us this evening, especially with your heavy agenda load, that this group is responsible for the policy and staffing levels in town. And therefore, we felt that it was important, the Board of Fire Wards, who had an emergency meeting last Monday, and I felt it important to vet it through our Select Board initially. The increase to the Fire Department budget is just over $80,000, which is slightly different from what I submitted in the letter. I want to thank Kim and Lynn for going through this, especially this time of year. It's been a little bit crazy. So thank you to our town administrator and finance officer for assisting through this process. The $80,000 does take in consideration decreasing on-call and part-time line items. Because of the staffing level that we would propose, from an organizational standpoint, there's actually reductions that could be made, because some of the shifts that we had planned with on-call or through our per diem line item for our current person would be reduced, and therefore, it's $80,000 as opposed to the total amount. We're hoping that if approved, staffing of the station, our main goal in the future, and certainly one person isn't going to be the silver bullet, but our goal is to at least have a person at the station 24/7. And certainly, in many cases, staffing levels are dictated by number of calls. We would have been in this predicament if it wasn't for a dedicated group of men and women probably five or six years ago. But because of the group that we have, for, I think our average is just below 900 calls over the last seven years. So I certainly have done a ton of research. We could certainly, or I could recommend doing a study similar to what Meredith did. Meredith hired MRI, which was the group that reviewed our salary and benefits the last time. Or if you wanted to, you could look at the MRI study that's online. It's on their website. And we're pretty equitable when it comes to Meredith, with the exception of they don't have a hospital, they don't have the college. Their calls are right around 500 calls annually. We're in the 900 range this year, 926 calls. We've broken things down that are applicable to the town, New London, for calls from a monthly standpoint, a weekly standpoint, and an hourly standpoint. So if the Board is so inclined, I can certainly give you those, or that information to review. But really, the survey that MRI did of Meredith is pretty equitable to New London. And when you look at the staffing, for instance, they put on six firefighters last year in order to meet their needs. So, not looking for six. So again, what we'd be looking for would be a firefighter, which, so there is some benefit, or a silver lining. And then again, we would look at, this is a phased-in approach, where we would be looking at a grant through the SAFER program. Again, I think that me personally, we've been very successful with our air packs, our gear replacement. We've applied for a bunch of grants and have been recipients of those grants. And I think that with what we're doing from our air pack replacement this year, the refurbishment of the tanker and saying to the feds, we can't afford a new tanker, we're going to re-chassis our old tanker. And if approved, the town is looking for a firefighter with two additional because of the staffing shortages that we have. I think we'd be really good potential candidates. What this would also do then is, at the end of that three-year program, it wouldn't be a substantial jump. Again, I think that with my tenure of being chief since 2007, we've always been long-term planners. We've always wanted to make sure we vet every avenue possible prior to requesting funds, whether it be through grants, whether it be through per diem, trying to do everything possible not to come to the town and say, we need additional full-time people. And unfortunately, it's not just New London. It's going to be all the towns surrounding us. All the towns around us are in the same predicament. And again, we're working with our mutual aid counterparts to make sure that we're in communications with them and they're planning ahead in the future. So New London doesn't become the department that takes care of everyone else. We're in this fight together. And from a mutual aid standpoint, it's important that all parties involved are on the same playing field. So I'm happy to entertain any questions. And again, thank you, but I'm sorry for the late modification in the budget.
This is an evening, Jay, of some sobering news, so that's okay. Janet, you've been attending the Fire Wards meeting, so perhaps you have some perspective on this in one way or another?
Yeah. Well, first, they definitely need more people. You need more help. You don't have enough people to respond to all of the calls that you have. And even though I think the SAFER grant is a great idea, it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get anyone. And to hire three people at one time and then absorb those three people in three or four years would be a lot for the budget. So my recommendation, and I said this at the Fire Wards meeting, I think they definitely should ask for one person this year, see how that works out, and then ask for another next year, and still apply for the SAFER grant. And if you get two people, that would be wonderful. But definitely, the department needs more help. There's not enough staff to do all that you do. And you do a great job, but you can't do it, continue to do it on the short staff that you have.
You might have answered my question, but I'm just trying to understand it. So you hire one person this year. What is your first question? How much more staffing, full-time staffing, do you envision needing and wanting over the next, I don't know, five years? What's your sort of plan for that? That's the first question. Then the second question, I think you answered it. You're still going to apply for the SAFER grant, and if you get it, you're going to try to bring on three people. The SAFER grant pays for them for three years.
Yes.
And at the end of three years, then it's on the town to pay those three salaries. So we would have three years to put money, regardless.
Yeah, so the plan, and again, in talking to our employees, in talking to the Board of Fire Wards, other people in the fire service, residents in town, there are people in this room that I talked to, as well as Phil Sherman, who's a fire protection engineer, and looking at various staffing models. And one of them is to take what we currently have and just hire one person and have a 24-hour rotation. The issue is that for Mike Mathi, who's our captain and does all the fire prevention stuff, he's meeting with people Monday through Friday. For me, probably being in the office two weeks or two days out of the week seems desirable, probably not an effective use of management time. And again, we look at it from, and not to get onto the numbers from before, but the numbers that I handed out in 1987, 34 members of the Fire Department, 34 people living in town, 30 working in town. Today, and unfortunately, we've dropped some as, you know, relatively recently, we have 40 members of the Fire Department, only 16 now live in town and 11 work in town. And out of those 11, they're the full-time people, Andrew, Mike, and I, as well as Jenna Edmonds, who's our per diem person. So the idea would be, and fortunately, Andrew just joined us from Rhode Island, Central Falls. We ended up grabbing him last year. And although he came into the Fire Department, came back to us, thinking, okay, this is going to be a several-day-a-week commitment, we're now taking his shifts and saying, okay, would you be willing to go into a 24-hour rotation? So you really need four people for 24 hours a day. And so what it would mean is, Andrew would go into the rotation, Mike and I would cover still that greater period of time when people are outside of town during the midweek period when they're working. And then if approved by the Select Board, the Budget Committee, and then ratified by Town Meeting, we would then hire one person. We would apply just for two. The problem is if we applied for three, then you would almost have a floater. So what's our idea for filling those shifts that Andrew... So, what's our idea for filling those shifts that Andrew or in the future, those individuals have for vacation, for sick time, whatever the case is? And that's really on-call. So, the on-call system worked really well. Can we scale that down? Can we modify it? And per diem? Can we have individuals? We're fortunate right now to have a bunch of full-time people. One of the issues is when they get off their full-time job, to be on-call for fifty dollars a night or hopefully ninety after the budget process, when they can be down in Derry and make seven hundred in a shift, it's not, there's, not that there's no incentive, it just makes it difficult. The other thing, too, is we have people in town that are well-trained, full-time firefighters, paramedics, EMTs, and it would be great to be able to utilize their resources here, maybe not in a full-time capacity, but certainly working part-time is hugely desirable. So, to answer your question, or just to reiterate, so it would be four people working twenty-four, and then some individuals during the day scattered with some per diem shifts. And that would cover us daytime hours, but also at night. And what it would also assist with is response times. So, there's been some times that we've had incidents. Anytime after night or on the weekends, there's going to be a delayed response. One of the homeowners, just recently, I just found this out from a local resident, had said, "Yeah, a police officer responded, and then the fire truck came, you know, five minutes or longer after the police cruiser arrived." Well, the police officer's on scene, they can respond relatively quickly. I'm responding from top of Kearsarch. It takes me ten minutes to get to the scene. It just, it is what it is. And with more and more people living outside the town of New London, you've got that delayed response and to have someone respond really quickly. I mean, we saw the difference when we had that, unfortunately, fatal car accident. A person was saved because we had a police officer on duty twenty-four hours a day. Person was saved. And time makes, time makes a difference. Without that individual and without the knowledge that patrol person had, we would have lost two in that fire.
So, if you don't get the SAFER grant, is your request next year going to be for another full-time employee in the year after?
Yeah, I think to phase it in, yes. I mean, obviously.
You don't have to justify it to me, I'm just trying to understand what your thought process is.
Yeah, it isn't, fiscally, it doesn't make sense to come in and say, "Hey, we need three full-time people." I mean, that's just a hard pill to swallow, especially with everything else that we're trying to do for all the other town employees and departments. And so, I think it's more somewhat palatable. It's not, this is not the best solution. This is, again, but to have a phased-in approach makes it somewhat easier to absorb, understanding what are the alternatives.
Yep.
And it's a scary, all of us. I was talking to a firefighter in Concord, and now Concord used to be like the go-to person or place to work, or Manchester, and people, now they're stepping stone to go to other organizations. And the longer we can keep people, the, from an institutional knowledge standpoint, it's just so, so important.
Yep.
Okay. Questions from the, comments from the audience? Very quiet audience tonight, don't we? So, Jay, I think that I'm supportive of what you're proposing for the reasons that BB and Janet have expressed. I think another one, which is sort of a softer one, or two. First, obviously, this is an appropriation, and we only get to do this once a year, on March twelfth. If you get the grant, then you're not going to spend the money. Right?
So, question. So, answer. If we were, so we would, what would happen would be, in March, would be the ratification of the budget. Usually, it's in April that the grant.
That's the appropriation.
Appropriation.
It's good July first.
Yep. So, in April, we would apply for the SAFER grant. For July first, the funds would be available. The timeframe for recipients of the grant is anywhere from July, August, September, October. So, usually that four-month, usually, I think Manchester was in August and, and of course, I wrote it down, the other recipient was in September. So, it, again, my feeling is that if we receive the grant in conjunction with having a firefighter, our shifts are covered.
Correct.
We could immediately go into our rotations. As it is right now, and we almost had to reverse engineer, okay, hypothetically, this comes to fruition, what does the shifts look like for our fire officers? Because, again, it's not necessarily the number of calls, it's not necessarily the response time, it's really trying to take care of those on-call officers that we currently have. How do we make it somewhat palatable? Because only having two full-time people in that rotation doesn't meet our needs. However, again, it's a Band-Aid fix in order to ultimately have two additional people for a total of four on the twenty-four rotation. So, my recommendation to the select board, Board of Fire Wars, Budget Committee, townspeople, would be to put the position in place to hire a person posted after town meeting. If we go through the process and we were recipients, then we also may have a pool of individuals that may not have been hired in the first round, and hopefully, they're still available, no different than the police service. It's really difficult getting full-time people. And so, if you have someone on your hiring list, that hiring list may be null and void in a month or two contingent upon other.
That was going to be my soft point, which is you're building up a potential bench of people that you could call on also.
Yes.
And then, given in this environment, if you find a good one, you don't want to lose them to other places.
Very much so. And we've had this discussion internally, as far as, we're a small town. We're a beautiful community. How do we, instead of the New London Fire Department being a stepping stone for someone coming in, how do you make the New London Fire Department desirable for what I saw? I was fortunate to have a job offer in Portland, Maine, and the city of Manchester when I was offered the job here. And for me, it was quality of life. It was a beautiful community, and there's obviously significant advantages for us. But how do we make the town of New London a destination town? And it's equipment, it's compensation, it's people getting treated well. And certainly, the support of the town has been phenomenal over the thirty-three years that I've been with the fire department. And hopefully, that continues. And the next generation will take the culture and move this through and have some good juju for us.
And that's one of the things I think we appreciate in what you do, and we appreciate what Chief Cobb has done over the years to make this a place that people want to come and work and find the benefits of it. It may not be as exciting as Manchester, but it's probably going to be a better job.
The good thing is our Narcan expires before we can administer it, so.
Even Clermont. Okay, so, I don't see any hands up there. Oh, I do, Ashley Hill.
Ashley Sebel, resident of New London. I do support Chief Lyon in this endeavor of bringing on some additional full-time firemen. I think one thing that wasn't mentioned that I do think is really vital is the amount of education that you also supply to our residents here. You come to the ICE house when the elementary school comes over. I've seen you guys up at Hilltop doing something up there with a long line of people, and I think that that's almost as valuable as, obviously, responding to calls, is being able to provide that education. And you have had to leave some of those events to respond to calls. So, I think, I'm assuming that bringing on some additional full-time first responders would allow you guys to continue and maybe expand some of that education, knowing that the fire station is covered as well.
Thank you. Good. Extra comment. Yep. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the request of the fire chief for the additional expenditure monies as outlined in the table of information given by the finance officer.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So, will you pass that on to the Budget Committee, please? As a change in our proposed budget? Believe it or not, I think the rest of the agenda may be a little faster. Kim, renewal of solid waste disposal and hauling contracts.
Right. We have our solid waste contract. It's a two-year contract. We've been with Andrew Scoggan for probably, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years. So, I recommend you renew that for two years. We also have the hauling contract, which is for six months. And as Sam's memo points out, we may have some changes in that. That's the people who take our trailer from Meredith to Berlin. So.
Did he give us a memo?
I'm not seeing his memo, but that's all right.
Yeah. We have used Hiltz Trucking for probably a couple of years now, and he may or may not get out of, he may or may not continue to do it. Sam has a commitment for six months. We also have our own tractor-trailer. If we had to, we could bring the trash. And we do sometimes bring it from New London to Berlin. So, I would recommend.
What is the increase in the two-year contract?
We went up, it's sixty-six dollars a ton now, and I'm sorry, I didn't write it down. I want to say it's between fifty-nine and sixty-three in the, per ton.
Down, then?
No, up. It's in the fifties to low sixties, and we're going to sixty-six.
Going to sixty-six.
Yeah.
Okay.
Has the composting had any effect on the ton?
Yeah, Sam talked about that at the budget here, budget meeting a couple of weeks ago. Big difference. We used to, in the summer, go quite often, three trips to Meredith. We'd go to Meredith, drop the trailer off, the trailer's then brought from Meredith to Berlin. And we consistently had three trips in the summer. Now, we're down to two. So, he has really applauded.
So, even though the price is going up, our tonnage is going down.
Yeah. And he's really applauded the work of the Waste Reduction Committee in that regard. And I think people, the recycling is back, obviously, so taking that paper out of the stream also helps, so, yeah.
He's been very articulate at the Waste Reduction Committee, that even in the slow period of time, that we're probably saving at least a trip a month, maybe two. So, yeah, there's a definite saving that's been occurred, plus it's good for the environment. Okay, so, entertain a motion to approve the contract for solid waste disposal and hauling con, hauling?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kim, town meeting start time?
So, Will and I have been talking, as you know, we start town meeting at seven PM, and we're, we were talking about potential increase in numbers of people going to the meeting. I think this past Saturday, you all saw a meeting with quite a few people. I'm not sure that we'll get fifteen hundred, but certainly, depending on what's on the warrant. And even if there's not anything interesting on the warrant, I think that more and more people are trying to get involved in going to these kinds of meetings. So, we would recommend that we start the meeting at six PM instead of seven, so those people who don't like to stay out late, you know, we could start a little earlier, hopefully end a little earlier than we have been. So, I would recommend you start at six o'clock, that we would put it on the warrant for starting at six.
Comments from the audience, those of you that left, about moving it up to an hour? Fire department, okay? Police department, okay?
Probably five is too early, four-thirty, but, you know, six is a good recommendation. Three, go for that.
Is this too early for working families? No? I don't, we don't have a lot of working families here tonight, but okay, except for, yeah. Andrew works, but he doesn't have a family. Okay. Entertain a motion to accept start time of six o'clock for this year's town meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the one other thing, I sent you the information to consider maybe dedication of the town report. Are you prepared to do that tonight or another time?
I haven't seen that.
Generally, you look at the list of people who are departed from the town.
Did you send that out recently?
At the end of December.
Ah, but that wasn't the complete list, right?
Well, there was a few days. We can ask Will if anybody's been added to it of note.
There's a couple of people that have added.
Yeah, I wasn't prepared. Were you prepared, Janet, to do that?
I'm all ready to go, so you all look at it.
I have not, I've not even looked at it, so.
Okay, it's, we're not going to send the town report in.
I'm happy to, if the two of you are ready, I'm happy to.
No.
I just noticed that.
It doesn't have to be today.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be, okay.
Look at it.
You look at it.
Yeah.
See who else might be on it.
Okay, still, you still have to do your report.
Okay. We are working feverishly in the office to get the town report done. Last meeting, I also encouraged people to get their town reports to me. They are coming in. So, that is the biggest thing going on in the office. I'm happy to report that we have hired somebody to fill the position of land use and assessing coordinator. Vicky Stafford comes to us from the Homeland Security and Emergency Management of the state. Prior to that, she was the deputy register of deeds for Merrimack County. So, she will bring lots of experience in the land use area, reading deeds, dealing with subdivisions and the like. So, we're really excited to have her. She'll be joining us on Friday, the twenty-fourth.
Fantastic.
Yep. So, that's what we have going on.
Congratulations. One to go.
One to go. The administrative assistant is not as critical. I want to get the new person on board because that person will also back up the AA position. So, we will get that person settled in. I will say that we got more than thirty resumes for the job, some of which I will look at for the AA position because I think some of them would be good for that. So, that's all good news. And I have to say, the quality of the resumes we got this time is much better than the last time. So, I think now people are starting, because for a while there, nobody was looking for jobs. People weren't either moving to new jobs or they were just, you know, staying with their current jobs. The ones that we got, more than thirty of them, are really, not all of them, obviously, but several more than, you know, I have been seeing lately. So, I was really pleased with that. Either that or more people are looking at places like Indeed and the NHMA website. That could be too, but it really was quite encouraging how good they were.
Good news. Okay, committee meetings. Kim? Oh, Kim. Janet?
Well, we had a Fire Wars meeting, and I don't think we need to go over that again, but I do, will say that Jay's proposal of hiring another individual was well-vetted. Everyone weighed in on it, and we're all very supportive of it, so it was a good meeting.
Okay. Any final board meetings? Nope?
Nope. Next week.
BB?
I had a budget committee meeting last night. We reviewed the welfare budget, the health officer budget, all of the social organizations, the lake protective associations, and the recreation budget. The budget committee did take a vote on the fifty thousand dollars to go back into the salary line for the recreation director. And there's, this was sort of the first vote that the budget committee had, and they're kind of waiting till the end to do one big vote, so we'll see what happens.
We'll come to the calendar here in a minute because that big vote's going to happen fairly soon.
Yeah, okay. I went over to our friends over in Sunapee to their select board meeting Monday night, just curiosity's sake. And you read about them all the time in the paper, so I figured I'd go over and check it out. Turns out, actually, they had the topic of solar array on their agenda. So, all of the select board members over there seem to be very much in favor of the solar array at the water and sewer department there in Sunapee. They're just, they're a little stressed about getting a warrant article done in time because they're going to need to do a bond to pay for it. But they are, I talked to Jamie last night, actually. He's still very much in contact with them. There are two grant opportunities, one state and one federal, that they're, that are available right now. So, they're trying to really push it so that they can, in case that money goes away.
Well, as long as they don't take the grant money that we've applied for.
True statement. And then, the other group that was there were the Newbury Conservation Commission members, and you guys have seen the materials and heard about the issue going on over at Mount Sunapee with their septic lagoons. So, they're, they'll be coming to us next. They're asking for the town officials to sign a petition, and they're, all they're trying to do is, the DNCR, which I meant to look up to remember what they stand for, what those initials stand for, Department of Natural Something or Other, they're the ones that oversee Mount Sunapee and the property. They've gone, they've, they're ghosting the Conservation Commission now, and they just want a public meeting with the Mount Sunapee Advisory Committee so that they can present what they've been finding. So, they're asking the town officials to sign a petition that just requests that public meeting because they just feel like they're not getting anywhere. And it's scary. That situation is really scary. It could be really... It could be really catastrophic if those things burst. And then the last thing is coming out of Saturday's meeting at the school district, there's a group of folks that have reached out to the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project Group and asked them to, they do a roadshow around the state, they do a pretty good presentation on education funding for the state of New Hampshire. So they've scheduled one at the high school on January 28th at 6:30. And we got an email today from them asking if we would consider being a sponsor or a host, I guess you'd call it, for that presentation. They're approaching all seven towns in the district to ask for that. And their reasoning, it's really just putting our name on there, saying we're hosting it. And the reasoning is, nobody's really heard of the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project, but if everybody sees that, oh, the towns are all sponsoring this, this might be important information. So, yeah, don't know how either one of you feel on that, but I, according to Will, Will spoke to the person today, I think, on the phone, and they've already got, I know Warner's all lined up to do it, and they think they've got Bradford lined up. I'm pretty sure Sutton would do it because I know one of their selectmen that's very active in this. So if it's okay with you all, I think it would be nice for us to join. And that's, that's it.
Okay, I'm all right with that. Are you okay?
Not yet.
Okay. So as I mentioned an hour and a half ago, I went to the water commissioners' meeting on Monday and purposely asked them to clarify what they're doing with their creative financing on the work that's being done on the Colby Point. In addition, the only other item of business they had on their agenda is they did approve an additional hookup to 32 Old Main Street for a two-bedroom, one-bath detached ADU that has been through its variance hearings with the ZVA here in town and is now going to go to the planning board to go through its, their site review. And it will require conditions to be put on related to septic and so on. This was simply the water commissioners voted 2-0 to approve the hookup on Monday night. Minute meetings? Minute meetings, yes. Meeting minutes. I have a question on December 5th while you're looking there. Janet, the short-term rental definition that's in the planning board's list of things to be approved this year, does that change in any way, what is reflected in our minutes of December 5th, that the actual ordinance on short-term rentals is going to be a selectman's ordinance? Or is this the beginning of the planning board taking on that responsibility? Or don't you know?
I don't know.
Do you know?
The short-term ordinance that we have been talking with the fire department and with Adam, that will be a selectman's ordinance. So that's something different. That's about being able to have inspections of short-term rental units intact.
But by definition?
The definition is going into the ordinance.
Definition will go into the ordinance, okay.
Yes, that's, that's a zoning issue.
But the ordinance itself will be a selectman's ordinance.
Right, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about these two sets of minutes?
On the 19th, on page, page two, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, paragraph starting Selectman Casey explained that the group, the end of the paragraph kind of ends.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, it's not really a full sentence. And I really couldn't even give you suggested language because I'm not really sure.
Could have been Sunday night when I was watching football, or I don't know. I will definitely look back at the, I'm using AI for minutes now, so sometimes AI just leaves me off. So I'll check in and see what you said, because I'm sure we're all interested.
Okay. No, it wasn't me saying, it was Mr. Brown, asked if there's a possibility that having it applied to the entire, and then it ends.
Okay, we'll find out what Mr. Brown said.
But other than that.
I thought I assumed it was him.
Yeah, but there might have been more words after that, I think, but anyway. That's it.
Motion to approve both sets of minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so our meeting, upcoming meeting calendar is, is here. Just briefly for our own purposes, thinking about the calendar now, if we have the further discussion about the police facility and what we want to do with that and what we actually want to put on the warrant and so on, that has to happen that night because we have to have the publicity into the inner town by the following day in order to get into the next week's issue, which gives us then the seven days that we need before the budget hearing. So the meeting on the 23rd will be relatively important. And so the question is, do we feel okay that, other than trying to sit in on whatever Ashley arranges, that we can skip a week? We don't have a meeting next week. I don't see any other reason to have one unless we feel that we just are going to be too tight on the 23rd to try to accomplish all that we've got to do in order to put the warrant together that night. So if we wanted to, we could schedule another meeting between now and then, but I'm looking to the two of you to what your pleasure is.
Sure. Because it doesn't, sure, to schedule another meeting for next Thursday, because isn't next Wednesday budget committee meeting that they're going to be finalizing things?
They're going to start, but they're, they're not going to finish.
Okay.
No.
So that's the next question. If the budget committee meets next week and maybe gets through most of what they got, because I understand they still haven't looked at capital reserves?
I can't remember.
They briefly looked at it in the beginning, but they didn't go into any depth. That was the first meeting.
There haven't been any numbers set out yet?
Right.
I didn't think so either.
So that means that they're not going to have a complete budget to get to us after that meeting.
Yeah.
Then their next meeting is on the 22nd, and that would be the one that we would be invited to go to and try to see if we can talk through.
Yep.
Any differences. So that, that, that isn't on our schedule, but it should be that, that if they wanted to invite us to come and see if we can reconcile differences. There may not be any differences.
Yep.
So I guess, so I would think if we keep the 22nd open, see if we get an invitation from the budget committee.
Yeah, and that's not even on here either.
No.
The 22nd isn't on this list.
That's because they only, it only shows their next meeting on here.
Yeah, okay.
But the one after that's on the 22nd, and Kim thinks that maybe is when they'll do their thing because they too have to have information by the 23rd.
Yep.
So it'd be good to get it done on the 22nd.
Okay.
I mean, on the 24th, excuse me. So, but I don't see the need for another separate meeting right now. I see when the budget committee's ready, we ought to be ready.
Yep.
And when the, Tony is available in the advisory committee, we ought to make ourselves available. But I don't want to keep us apart if we want to have another meeting.
No.
You sure?
Yep.
And then I will just remind you that on the 30th, we have our quarterly meeting with the sewer commission, and I think we should expect that that will be a longer selectman's meeting also, just to deal with whatever is left over from rushing to get the warrant done. Okay, we are going to go into non-public session to discuss a personnel matter under RSA 91-8: colon 3, et cetera, and then we'll come back and sign the pay vouchers. Thank you all for coming out this evening.